Here is a little wiggy today. So it may take a second.
It's raining.
Yeah, usually that doesn't bother us, but.
Uh, wiggy today.
Confirm you are streaming.
Okay, so now I am streaming and now I gotta get back to the.
It doesn't show on mine that you're streaming.
It does, it says.
Yeah, I actually went to YouTube and actually put it up on two different screens. You're on.
Yep.
Well, fancy guy.
Alex is multitasked, multi-talented tasking. Okay, so now you can do the meeting thing.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. First order of business is William Griffin. Is he?
I sent the, I sent Carolyn at Pier City, the information. He was supposed to go to the branch for her to log him on. So if he pops up later, then we can do that.
Okay, uh, then Monette Library Financing, you're up Courtney.
All right, um, it's great to be here and us, well, me and my son Todd, Larry is actually traveling today, but we have a financing for $6 million that the board can approve to lock in the interest rates. This was a fun process. It's the first library district that I've gone through the full rating and then the informational meeting. So, um, we hope that everything we said we were going to do, we did do and that you, you see that whenever we were talking about the things in December and January with the rating, uh, meeting with the local banks. And then the overall, when we talk about the interest rates and the structure that the Board of Trustees can lock in, so.
Library meeting.
Say that again. Oh, she's on the phone.
Okay.
I'm gonna share my screen or attempt to share my screen, uh, with the documents that Gina had sent out to everyone just to highlight some of the things within them. So the first one is the ratings report from Standard and Poor's. So the actual process consisted of sending in a preliminary financial analysis which included information on the district as well as the project itself. And then they looked at various metrics within their, the income levels, housing, demographics, largest taxpayers. And based upon that, they had assigned a rating of A on the district itself, such your general obligation rating, and then an A minus on the lease financing. The difference between the A to the A minus is because they're not general obligation bonds, the full faith in credit, they do require annual appropriation. It's one notch, so one step below the G O rating for the district. The bulk of what I really want to talk about are the numbers themselves. So these, what I'm showing on the screen here, the 2% to the 2.5%, and I'll talk about that structure. These are the interest rates that the Board of Trustees can lock in at this meeting. For some comparison purposes, the, the last time that we had talked to you, the financing that we were looking at was 5,750, that's what we had numbers for. The average interest rate, this average coupon was about 3.25%, which we were on the higher side and more conservative. So with this structure, the board can lock in an interest rate of just over 3.01%. But the biggest one I want to point out is this bond yield for arbitrage, 1.76. This is the effective interest rate on the financing for the full 20 years. For comparison, back in January, February, that interest rate was just under 3%, so 2.99. So we're 1 and 1/4% below what our original projections were. And a big part of that is how we were able to structure it and obtaining the premiums for the project to lower that effective interest rate. So aside from this schedule, which is the overall amortization schedule with the first payment being due in April of next year, I want to talk about the pricing for it. As you can see, we have the coupon which matches that page before, but then we have those yields that are lower for all of the maturities except the last one. So for the maturities that have the coupon higher than the yield, those are priced at a premium, which means that the investor was willing to pay more money upfront in exchange for that slightly higher interest rate, the 2, 3, and 4%. That translates to each of these dollar prices being over and above the maturity value. So the district is receiving more money upfront for these maturities, but when you actually have to pay them back, you're only paying back the 240 to the 1,625. The last maturity, the 2.5 deal, 2.65, is actually being sold with an original issue discount. So the investor is paying less than base value for them. That's why you have the 1,953 versus the 2 million for the maturity value. Same concept, the district will be paying back the $2 million. By adding all of these dollar prices and then comparing them to the maturity value, we get this net reoffering premium of just over 300,000. So this was used to pay for the cost of issuance as well as then be more money over and above the $6 million that will go into the construction fund to pay for all of those construction costs as they come due. The final sources and uses, we have the proceeds of $6 million, that reoffering premium of just over 300. This money is then used to pay these cost of issuance, which are all one-time fees except for this registrar paying agent trustee bank. So for as long as the certificates are outstanding, the district will receive an invoice of about $1,800 for U M B Bank. They're responsible for ensuring the certificate holders receive their semi-annual interest or semi-annual principal and interest payment each year. So then after paying all of those costs, the deposit to the construction fund, 6,164,435.60. And this money will be available on June 2nd. So at that point, the financing will close and it's, it's a phone closing. And we'll let Gina know that the money is at U M B Bank and can be spent. The last item within this part is the cash flow. So on the left side, we have the assessed valuations and the actual amounts through 2021. These numbers are a little different from what I had before because of the source. So prior to, um, going through the rating process, I was using the Missouri State Auditor. But the numbers that are on this screen are actually ones from the counties themselves. So I think it's, it's a better depiction on where the A V has been and, you know, projecting it out of about a 1% growth each year, um, starting next year in 21, 22. Assuming four and a quarter cents. Really, it takes about four cents. I have four and a quarter just to show that this debt coverage ratio to be more consistent with what we use during the rating process. With your overall payments being around 420,000 after the first year and the last few years are higher because of the way that we have it structured with that $2 million with the original issue discount. The surplus funds available for district use, it's just money over and above the four and a quarter cents that's just going to be lumped in with the remaining three points or 2.75 of that seven cents that was added in. If you did set that aside, money year over year to accumulate, this then can be used to make prepayments on the financing, um, which is going to be helpful and we'll talk about those call features. Or, uh, when it becomes economical to refinance. I do want to point out, there was one thing I missed on this page, the call features. So with during discussions, obviously in December and then January and when we were going through the rating process, we knew it was important to have some of the maturities have a very short call feature in order to accommodate contributions, um, any other donations so that you weren't locked in for the, you know, a standard five years for us to have to continue to make those principal and interest payments that if those donations came in, you can pay off a portion of that financing early. So with this structure, the 2027 to 2029 maturities are all callable April 15th, 2023. So just a little less than two years. So what that means is as of that date, 805,000 can be paid off. So when you have those donations, especially since the construction at that point will be complete, money that had been contributed to various donors can then be, uh, pooled to pay that off. And once it opens, if you were to get, you know, let's say a $15,000 donation come June of 2023, you can pay off another $15,000 early. Once that call date opens, it remains open. Are there any questions on, on the interest rates that can be, can be locked in before I go to the next item? And this structure is a little different from what we were looking at before, especially with this original issue discount. And that was, um, I asked you a question and then I just start talking. But I, I guess I, I really want to highlight that it was based upon feedback from the informational meeting that was held last Wednesday. Edward Jones, I wasn't gonna wait to the end, but Edward Jones is taking down this entire $2 million. I've been at L J Hart and Company for eight years and that's the most I've ever seen Edward Jones take, um, you know, from just a percentage as well as overall dollar amount. So the interest from the representatives in the local area was very high. And I think that speaks so much to the overall library district. So I would say, you know, that's, that's a really nice thing to know that there are so many individuals that want to be part of this, that they are willing to take down a third of the financing, um, in order to accommodate those orders. So, uh, that's, that's wonderful.
And if I can interject, I know two, well, I know all three of the agents in this area that are working on that right now. And I, one of them talked to me at the Kiwanis meeting and they've already had 150 clients commit.
Wow.
That's, that's great.
That's great.
Uh, and then Nikki Weber had called me to express how excited they were. Um, and also for her and her husband to offer a donation in the form of stock. So I don't know what that will be yet, but it's, that's coming. So it's, it's really, it's finally starting to, um, infiltrate the community. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. While I have these, um, PDFs open, the largest document of all of them, the official statement. So, uh, in addition to the budgets and the audits, this was another document that was submitted to Standard and Poor's when we went through the rating process. And then whenever we were going through the marketing process, both.
Bye.
Oh. During the informational meeting as well as our formal marketing process, we sent out this prospectus. So it includes the information on the project, what you're using the money for. And then all of that other detailed information on the district, the organization of it, the housing, the other demographics. Um, and then your audit for the most recent fiscal year is also included. So this is the summary of everything that we have done thus far um, for the financing to give the investor, you know, all of that knowledge in a very concise format. Okay, I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna close this out. Close all tabs.
There's Julie.
Hi Julie.
This next item within the screen share is a comparison of interest rates. So I know when Larry and I were first talking with the board, we wanted, we had told you, in order to give you an idea on how do your interest rates stack up to other financings that were most recently in the market, we put together this comparison of interest rates. So the district's interest rates that came from Schedule 1 are listed on the far left side. And then compared to other interest rates for other financing. So I picked one year, 2031 for comparison purposes. And you see it's the three, the 1.35 and the 2.125. So just to reiterate, the 3% is the interest rate that will be paid to the investor. The 1.35% interest rate is the yield that the investor will realize as of the April 2026 call date. So that's the earliest those certificates can be called. If they are not called because it's not economical or it just doesn't make sense to do a prepayment and the investor holds those certificates until maturity, he or she will realize a yield of 2.125%. So for comparison purposes, I like to look at the middle number because it's the, it's the interest rate that the investor will realize 100% with certainty, that 1.35%. So going across Waynesville didn't go out that far, so I don't have a comparison, but looking at the city of Trenton, they have that three, but they're yielding 1.57%. So it happened a week and a half earlier. The fact that you have a 1.35, I'm really excited about because their rating is an A rating, so it's a little higher than yours, but your interest rate is 22 basis points lower. The other benefit is your certificates have that five-year call feature. These have an eight-year call feature. So the city of Trenton will be locked in paying that 3% interest rate for five years versus the library district is only locked in to pay that 3% for five. And then even when we go out the other years and the other maturities, we have the Webb City School District, 3 deal, 1.63. Their financing was just a little less than a month ago, but still, um, the, the local support I think is, was really beneficial for being able to accept those lower yields. And it, it speaks, it's, once again, it speaks very highly to, to the district and, and the efforts that you've had thus far in the process to construct the branch. Are there any questions on how your proposed interest rates stack up to other financings that were recently in the market? Okay. Last two documents. Let's see. The resolution. This is the actual document for approval that the board can use to lock in. Within the top, all caps paragraph, it's a summary of it issuing $6 million for the construction of the new district branch. And that you will pay back the financing on an annual basis. We have the maturity table with each of those years, the principal amounts, and then the interest rates and those yields that match up to the pricing summary Schedule 1A. The next two paragraphs detail the two call features. The first one, that those three maturities are callable in 2023. And that the maturities in 2030 are callable and thereafter are callable in 2026. We do have those two term bonds, so we have those sinking funds related to each of those term bonds. As I'm moving down. Within section nine, so continuing disclosure, on an annual basis, starting with this year, so within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, so December 31st, the district will update the financial data. So the largest taxpayers, your assessed valuations. And this is something that we will reach out to Gina in order to obtain this information, to submit it to the MSRB. Um, even though we do help, it is a requirement of the district to do. So it's that as well as your financial statements that will be submitted. And the last part is just the approval of it. With regard to signing things and assuming it is approved, um, I have all of the legal documents in my email. I will be reviewing them, printing them off, and then I will send them to Todd McCracken in order to arrange for everything to be signed and notarized. And the last document is the news release. So we prepare this to really brag on the district, talking about all of the local support. So Security Bank of Southwest Missouri purchased 495,000. First State Bank of Purdy purchased 1,090,000. Mid Missouri Bank, 240. Central Trust, 250. And then individuals over 2 million. So we did have another individual that purchased $25,000 outright aside from the Edward Jones. So 68% going local, that's, that's really phenomenal. Um, we're really pleased with that. And I think the informational meeting and just letting those banks know, even for the ones that couldn't attend, that it was, you know, the information was coming out, um, allowed them to have, you know, a little more time to think about purchasing them because not all of them did come. And then, you know, really be a part of the overall, uh, process. And then just some more details on the call features. That's all I, that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
What, what if, if we got donations and it paid all 6 million, then what happens? Other than, you know, these bonds? What if somebody just says, okay, I'm just gonna give you all of it?
So after June 2nd, when the money's in the bank and the financing closes, in two years, you can pay off 805,000 in April 15th, 2023. And then three years later, on April 15th, 2026, you can pay the remaining, just a little less than 5.2 million.
So that money, if we were to get all those donations, then that money could just simply be set aside, gaining interest to pay the payments as we need them. And then the balance goes down as soon as we, you know, get the money, right?
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, okay, this is going through U M B. So I'm assuming that we set up a separate construction account through U M B?
You won't have to. They will set it up on your behalf. It's not, so it's, it's not like a bond where the money is deposited, let's say at a local bank, at like First State Bank of Purdy in a separate account. If it was a general obligation bond, it would be. This will be set up in a, a construction account that U M B Bank will have. So then when the district wants invoices paid for the construction, there will be a requisition form that's approved. That along with the invoice is submitted to U M B Bank. And Tori Wiegand is going to be the paying agent. She will cut a check, send a wire in order to, to pay on behalf of the district.
Okay, so all the draws that are gonna be requested from the construction company, um, for the length of the project are gonna go to her?
Correct. And she'll pay them. And, uh, in conversations, the turnaround time is usually one to two days for a check to be cut. So if you get, um, you know, a request for payment, once it's approved, then she will, you know, cut a check two days later.
Okay, so will the construction manager submit those to me or will he just submit them directly to U M B?
So the. The payment applications will come to us first. We then go and say the work that the contractor is claiming has actually been on, done on site. We sign saying that, we say that the, the money matches the contract. Uh, we wait for all wage reports to be submitted. And then when we sign it and turn it over to you, that's when you would go to, uh, pay the check. So we're the kind of, uh, step in between.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was some checks and balance that.
Yeah.
Yep.
She, Tori won't just, if, I mean, anybody, if I submitted an invoice to her, she, I mean, she would ask for the requisition. She's just not gonna say, oh, here, cut a check to Courtney Wegman. She wants to get paid too. Good question though.
So are we, are we having the, um, traditional construction loan where we pay just interest until it's done? Is that how that works or what?
No.
No. Okay.
Nope. So the, the first interest payment, once, so once the financing closes on June 2nd, at that point, that's when interest starts accruing. The first payment for this financing won't be due until April 15th of next year. Uh, typically, U M B Bank will send an invoice, I want to say probably middle of March around the 15th in order to be approved and then payment received by around April 1st, April 2nd, so that they have the funds on hand to then pay the certificate holders on April 15th. And then that same process will continue every six months.
Yeah, there's always an interest and a principal payment and they're always separated off.
Yes.
So we need to vote, they need to vote today on the resolution?
Yes.
And then once, once that's done and Todd gets all the paperwork, where he was there, oh, there you are. Then he'll, me know, and then I'll set up with Regina and Julie.
Yes.
A meeting place. I was thinking here, if that works for you all, if it works for Regina. Um, and that, because then we can just get it all done at one time and we can get Cindy to be our notary.
That would be great. And I, so since I have all the legal documents, I will FedEx them to Todd. Anticipated for him to have them no later than Monday of next week. So that they can be signed either on two, you know, maybe Monday if I can get them there earlier. Um, so sign either Monday, Tuesday, latest Wednesday.
So I'll, I'll get with you ladies and set something up.
I know at the meeting that we had, the enthusiasm was, was very strong and I was really pleased with that since we've been dealing with this for 20 years. But, uh, but the enthusiasm, well, I mean, it's true. But the local enthusiasm was really good. I, I was very, you know, I was very much, um, pleased with the, uh, you know, feedback we got from everybody that attended the meeting.
Me too.
Isn't that how you guys felt?
So we need a motion.
Absolutely, yes, yes. Yeah. From, from what I understand is not a lot of these bonds get handed uh, the out, the, like the big hedge fund people grab them before the local people. So, um, they, that's why, I think that's why a lot of the excitement was there too, that they.
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the resolution as stated.
I make a motion.
Thank you, Julie. Second?
Can, yeah.
Yes.
Can you do a roll call for the, uh, yea and nay please?
Okay. And Wendy seconded?
Uh, Janine, wasn't it?
I did.
Uh huh. Janine did.
Oh, okay. All right, so we need a roll call. Mr. Piter?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Janine?
Yes.
And Wendy? Yes, and Julie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I think that's unanimous.
Wonderful. Thank you all for choosing us to be a part of this. It, I mean, I'm, I'm excited whenever the, you know, construction's done or when you have groundbreaking to come down there and see it.
Better.
I, I enjoy, whenever I do, we do financings for new money things, I like to go back, you know, once things are done to see it. It's like, oh, even though I didn't build it, uh, it's still, you know, it's, it's fun to be a part of it.
Right, and we have to, this week, we've had at least two people contact us, one from us, from Las Vegas actually, with, uh, donations for the project. Uh, because they've heard about it. They were, either they used to live here or something like that. But that's really, that's really great because they wanted to know about groundbreaking and all of that. So I mean, that's just word of mouth. Um, someone told them we were finally going to break ground and we had people calling. So, you know, we were really, really pleased with that.
Okay. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Do you have something for us, Alex?
Yeah, he, uh, I was gonna talk about the Monet bidding schedule. Can we just go ahead and move that up and then Alex, unless he just wants to stay through the meeting, doesn't have to stay?
No, I, I didn't have anything in particular. I was just here. It's, everything's happening all at once and I just wanted to be here to answer any questions.
Okey dokey.
Yeah, so if we can move then from new business, the new Monet Library bidding schedule up, then he won't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Unless he wants to.
If he looks forward to.
Is that all right, Regina?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. Why don't you talk about it, Alex? Cause then you're gonna interject anyway, so.
Well, hopefully I've done a pretty good job sharing all the info. Um, we, uh, we, we met with Clint last Monday and now that we're close enough, we kind of got commitments from him or at least tentative commitments on when these things are going to occur. So, um, Paragon knows, our consultants know, Barry Lawrence knows, everybody knows when things are slated to occur. With how crazy things are, we kind of all understand that this is all tentative and this is uh, cross our fingers and hope that it all happens like this. Uh, just unprecedented volatility. The, uh, the last day, so with Paragon is, and designing team is gonna finish our documents on the, uh, twenty seventh next week. We distribute everything to Clint on Friday, the twenty-eighth. So Clint gets the final signed and sealed, somebody put a stamp on it, done, uh, bidding drawings. Clint's gonna take two weeks to put bid packages together. And what that means is he takes all of our work and then chops all that up into a, um, a site scope, a plumbing scope, uh, and all those things and bids out those individual packages. Uh, that work is kind of the, one of the real benefits of the construction manager process. Instead of just the GC saying everything and I'll figure out who the subs are, it's, you guys get to pick and choose from all those different ones. Um, at the, the last day that Clint can send those bid packages out and still then hit the July fifteenth board meeting for contract signing is June sixteenth. So Clint, no matter, he can, he can always release them earlier. But we have to have all of them out by June sixteenth. From there, uh, we're gonna have what we call a, a pre-bid meeting. It's where we invite all of the bidders uh, to a single location. We present the project, we, we talk, we answer questions. Uh, it's really, while there's lots of phones and emails, it's the one chance for face-to-face communication on the project for bidders. Um, in addition, we physically travel to the site. Um, it's surprising how helpful, not surprising, it just is uh, very beneficial for bidders to see the site as it sits right now. Um, because it helps figure out what it's gonna take. Um, that's gonna be on June twenty-third at one thirty. We're gonna hold that in the Pierce City Library. Um, we're going to record that meeting. We don't, I, I don't think we've ever streamed or I, I have not streamed or recorded a pre-bid meeting. Um, number one, COVID has kind of made that the new standard. And then in addition, um, with how busy everyone is, the ability to record that pre-bid and distribute that recording afterward is now valuable beyond what it used to be. Bids will be due on July seventh. I believe that's a Wednesday. And, um, I just saw Gina, you had the email uh, coordinating that with the Pierce City branch. And, um, so we, we'll have all those bids due. Again, the bids can come to Pierce City earlier than that. The chances of that happening are pretty slim. They all tend to come in at about five to ten minutes before that time. Um, Clint and I and Gina and Joyce and I guess anybody else that really wants to, will spend two very intense days analyzing all those bids because there's twenty-some-odd bid packages and there's multiple bids per, there's a lot of information to go through. We're supposed to be done by that, by that Friday. Um, we'll set up a meeting on July twelfth with Gina, Joyce and Clint. Uh, this is a meeting that we're telling you about, but we actually don't necessarily want the board at. Um, you could uh, listen in, I guess, or we, we could stream it to you or somehow, but we're trying to get a non-board meeting, board rules meeting to go through all the bids. So that Gina and Joyce say, uh, or Alex and Clint can say, here are recommendations to hit your budget and, uh, best quality. Gina and Joyce go through that list, say, here's the things we want to tweak about it. And then at that day, we'll have that selection from Gina and Joyce. Um, so on the Monday, Clint will turn around the following day and get a draft of the GMP. That's the guaranteed maximum price. That's the real construction contract dollar amount. And he creates that based on the subcontractors that Gina and Joyce have tentatively approved. We bring that, uh, Paragon has to turn around, turn it into a contract draft in a day, which we'll do, it's fine. Uh, we'll turn around at the July board meeting and present the GMP and the selected subcontractors. The board at that point has every right to say no to any of the subcontractors or the numbers. But what we're hoping is that all of the work that we've done that week beforehand gets us to a number and a group of subcontractors that results in a yes vote at that board meeting. Um, and at that point, uh, we will have a construction contract ready to sign and start the project. So that's, that's kind of the big picture timeline from today to July fifteenth. Are there any questions on any of that?
Sounds good.
I would just plan on that July fifteenth meeting may potentially be a little long depending on how all that comes out, especially if you all have questions. Um, typically, we don't have very much in a July meeting, but this is an atypical year. And with construction, it, it adds a little tweak to things. So, and you know, many years, we didn't even meet in July. So, um, we, we have the last couple of years. There's, it's been necessary. So, um, just an FYI, make sure you put that on your calendar.
Um, I'll, I'll definitely attend the June board meeting. Again, it's very similar to this. Nothing to present. Just to be here to answer questions, tell you what's going on.
And Alex, that may not be, it may be the twenty-fourth and not the seventeenth, but I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it's our budget meeting and that's one thing I'll talk with the board about later, but I'll email you if it changes.
That makes sense. Um, totally side note, um, I just got an email from Brad. We have a bunch of new hires. He's gonna ask that they sit in on the July board meeting to witness something like that. Uh, just a heads up that Paragon may attend and you'll see a bunch of faces that are new. Um, so the, the last bit that I wanted to talk about, just because I've got the opportunity, is the volatile market. And how there have been many phone calls and emails between Gina, Joyce, Clint, me. Uh, you guys saw the, the metal decking email that went out. Um, we've then seen even more price increases beyond that. Um, our plan and strategy is we've exhausted every idea, change, tweak that we can think of. And by we, I mean Barry Lawrence, all of our consultants and Clint. Um, so we're, the plan is to release the bid drawings, get real bid numbers instead of estimates. And then determine what we do in order to, to get to budget. At this point, any moves that we make could backfire and put us in a worse position than, um, yeah, a, at this point, it's just kind of out of our hands. And that, I really don't, I don't think I've ever said that before. So it's, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, with that in mind, is there anything else? Cause this is kind of our, well, Paragon finishes in a week.
Do you want to talk about tomorrow and just give them a heads up?
Absolutely. Um, we, uh, are finishing what we call the ninety-five percent bidding documents at the end of the day today. Um, and we send that to Clint tomorrow morning. Uh, I'm going to physically be traveling to Pierce City with Clint, Gina and Joyce. And we're going to have a marathon day where we quite literally go page by page through the entire drawing set. Um, while it is mind-numbing, it is incredibly beneficial to catching and making sure that the bid documents that go out on the street have everyone's support and everybody understands what is in them. Um, it's surprising with just how big and complex a construction project is, how the little thing, it's the uh, that we didn't put, uh, uh, a piece of casework in the corner or something. It, it gets down to those little details where um, making sure that everybody's seeing what they want in those drawings. Um, it'll be an all-day marathon. We'll have some time slots. We're gonna start off with interior design and then go through the engineering disciplines. Um, I, Gina, I don't know if anyone wants to attend. Like I said, it's, while it's fairly mind-numbing, you're, there's nothing secretive about it. You're more than welcome to join.
I can send, we're gonna be, um, the four of us will be in person, but we're going to have it set up as Zoom because Jessica and Tanner.
It, it's actually, yeah, it's actually the entire designing team. Engineers will be joining digitally and presenting from their offices, but me and Clint will physically be in Pierce City.
And you're welcome. I mean, uh, if you're interested, uh, email me and I'll send you the Zoom link. And you can sit in for part of it or none of it or all of it. If you're really wanting to come, do that for a whole day. Then we'll start at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, so.
Yep.
And we had checked and the mental health support We may need liquid infusion of chocolate. I don't know.
I was gonna say the, the Pierce City coffee pot may be running all day.
Yeah.
All right. That's, that's all I really have to contribute. Uh, as always, feel free to reach out, ask questions. We'll, we'll answer anything we can.
Thank you, Alex. I want to thank you for all this hard work you've been doing on our behalf. Um, you've given us some good direction and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I, a lot of that credit needs to go to Clint as well. And um, while I may be a, a figurehead on the project, the, the teams and the engineers, that they're a big, big part of that. All right. Well, thank you. Have a great board meeting and, uh, I wish us all luck in July.
Absolutely.
See ya.
Okay, minutes from the April fifteenth meeting. Everybody read them? Need a motion to approve those minutes?
I still move.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I ask a question? I may be frozen. Um, adding that security camera, does that make security cameras at all the branches now with Shell knob and don't you think we ought to have them at least on the doors everywhere?
Well, we'll have to budget for them because they're really expensive. So, yeah, we can talk about that more when we get to, cause I'm gonna talk about it in the director's report. But, yeah. It's, we've kind of done it on a case-by-case basis, but.
Okay, so that vote was unanimous, Joyce. Fin, financial report.
So, um, we have collected what we're probably gonna collect this year. Well, we are, I won't say probably, we have collected one point nine million dollars and some change in current tax. And you can see that's up considerably from this time last year. Some of that's because of assessments, but the bulk of that's because of our being able to collect the full tax levy amount. So kiss that and be nice to it, cause it's not gonna be that high next year. But, um, hope, well, who knows? Probably not. But delinquent, um, you can see we're up there as well. Um, we're doing really well. Uh, you know, it was hard to project last year because I didn't really know the full impact of that tax levy. And so I was pretty conservative. So I like being conservative, which means that we are in the black instead of in the red with that. So this month, um, we've collected a hundred and seven thousand uh, dollars. Some of that was from, uh, donations from the Monet interest income. I'm sorry, that wasn't donations. That's because we cashed in a CD to pay for the architect fees. So we had about ten thousand dollars in interest from that CD. Um, so any, there's nothing else that's unusual. I'll talk about state aid and state equal, equalization in a minute. Uh, with expenses, we're just pretty much right in line. We've not had anything really weird that we've had to pay for unexpected. Um, hopefully that will be a trend that continues, uh, on down the line. So our expenses this month were um, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. And part of that is higher this time because there's some things that come due annually and we've had to pay those contracts. So like with our property liability insurance, that came due and it was seventeen thousand, five ninety-three. So it'll make things a little bit higher than average. We're in healthy shape in our checking operations. Um, so we're at, um, including our CD and saving operations, we're at one point seven million in checking. And you can see our reserve funds have come down. That's, part of that's because we've cashed that CD to pay for the architect fees. So, um, and we plan, I probably will cash a couple of more of those. We're not, we're earning little to no interest right now. Cause we're like, some of those are like less than a half a percent. And quite frankly, uh, we have a bank that's just a big pain in the patootie. So I'm just really tired of dealing with them. Um, I just don't understand so, um, why they have such stringent policies when none of the other banks in the area do. So, and they've been a pill the whole time. So let's just not have our money there. And I won't say in, in the meeting who that is, but if you want to know afterwards, I'll be happy to tell you. When it's not on record.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I still move.
Wendy? And Jan second? All in favor? No, that wasn't Jan?
Janine, I think.
Janine.
Janine?
It was me, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Motion carried. And circulation statistics.
Okay, so, um, Mount Vernon is pretty much out of the equation right now. Um, so that's why our overall circulation's so low. Um, cause they usually are right up there with the Monet. So that would have been another three thousand circulations that we lost with them being closed. Um, there's no comparison with last year. Just a reminder, we were closed for COVID. That's why there's big fat zeros across the line. Um, but we were open an average of nineteen days um, and circulated almost seven hundred items a day. So that's pretty good. Um, we continue to be high in circulations with, uh, our MoLib to go. Um, we continue to be high in circulations with, uh, our MoLib2Go. Um, we're down compared to April of last year, but again, we were closed last year, so people didn't really have a choice. If they wanted to read something, they were using e-resources. And you'll see that same drop in hoopla. Um, I have, uh, we are talking about in the new year, and I'll present that in my budget, about adding some e-resources. You know, we had promised that we would do that with the tax levy. And, uh, I think it'll be easy to do and we'll probably put some more money into hoopla as well and maybe bring those circulations back up. So, um, at any rate, people, I hear all the time about how people love hoopla. Missouri libraries to go and has to, in fact, at my Kiwanis meeting the other, no, at, uh, a rehearsal I was at, one of the performers said that he had, he was listening to ebooks, cause he spent an hour in the car. And he had one of ours checked out from, uh, overdrive, so I was like, yay! So I love when people tell me stuff like that, so. Um, computer use again is affected because Mount Vernon's closed. Um, so it's pretty, it's pretty well down. Um, and then we're still doing pretty good with our programs. Um, you know, we have some in-person that are outside, uh, and in some cases where you've given approval. But although that number's pretty low indoors, um, so a hundred and sixty-one programs with four thousand attendees is nothing to shake a stick at, so. Did pretty good. Uh, the branches are just doing things as you, business as usual. We did have uh, National Library Week last week. Um, Greg created some bookmarks for that that promoted National Library Week on one side and our upcoming SRC program on the other side, and we probably should have printed double what we did, cause they went like hotcakes and people really liked them, so. I'm a, a big fan of doing our own stuff because we can brand it, number one. And number two, it's way cheaper than buying from ALA. They charge like ten bucks for two hundred bookmarks and it's like ten dollars in shipping. So whatever, you can keep your bookmarks. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, director's report.
Okay, so, um, just to give you an update on Mount Vernon. They did complete the Sheetrock work and the mudding and taping and all that kinda stuff. And sanding, so everything's prepped and ready for paint. Um, we picked the paint colors. We're just gonna go with a neutral, um, creamy, tan, beige. Just an off-white through the building and we're not gonna put that bright blue back up, so, um. And then there's one wall in the children's area. We will paint blue, but it's a real pretty shade of blue. We're taking down the big, um, bulletin board and the staff is so happy that they won't have, I mean, it was huge. Yeah, and it was just so much to upkeep, so, uh, it's gone. So, or it's going somewhere. Then Joyce and I have also picked out flooring. Uh, we'll have, uh, carpet, just like we've had before. We're doing carpet tiles. We picked out a really pretty carpet, I think, that will, um, probably hold up better to dirt than the current lighter color. The, um, genealogy room, we had still had several boxes of the tiles from the older carpet. And we didn't want them to go to waste because they're expensive. And so we're gonna use them in the genealogy room. It'll look almost like a rug when they're done, because we'll have a border around it, so I think that's gonna look really nice. And then we're using that, um, hard, uh, what do you call it? LVT, the luxury vinyl tile that's so popular, planks. Um, behind the circ desk and the office, meeting room, hallways and bathrooms. And then we also had to pick out cabinets and sinks and so I've gotta get that information, but we're held up right now until the insurance company pays SerPro. So, um, it's supposed to have happened this week, so we'll see if it does. I've talked to Isaiah, the insurance rep, and we'll hopefully move forward. Um, security, so, um, we had two additional cameras installed here, one that monitors the back corner of the building and about the first four parking spaces as a result. Which are mine, Joyce's, it's the administrative staff parking spaces. But I wanted to make sure we got that corner to see what people are doing. And so far, I have to say, we've not seen people congregating in between the buildings and we locked the electric box, so they can't use the electric outlet there. And then, of course, we put in security lights there as well, so it's not quite as dank and private as it used to be, so. Then we are installing cameras at Shell knob because we had some uh, unsavory activity outside the building where somebody tried to jimmy the door. Um, and then we also have one trained on the circ desk. Um, because we've had some money issues with the donation boxes. So we just wanna make sure that we have a camera on that, so if that happens again, now. This location and Shell knob are the only two that actually have cameras. Cassville, Marionville, Aurora and us all have monitored security. We've not found it necessary to have cameras. But that is something that we could consider in the future, but I think that's something we would have to talk, we, we probably would have to bid that out. Um, because it, it was several thousand dollars for us to do this here. And I can't remember, Shell knob was a couple of thousand. We're not monitoring them, but, um, the cool thing is, uh, that Jennifer will have this ability and I will too, because I have the app. Federal Protection has an app, and so I can push that button and I can see every single security camera that we have online. And so if there's an issue, I don't even have to be here to see it. If I get a call from the uh, Federal Protection, I can pull that up and see myself what's going on. It only records if there's motion detected. So you're not having to sit there and weed through hours and hours of footage that where there's nothing going on. So I, and I have in fact done that a couple of times, just to make sure it works the way it's supposed to. So it's a very nice feature, so.
I wish, I wish we could consider it on our long-range plans for the branch. Cause we had a creepy experience out here in the country, uh, last summer and discovered somebody pilfered through our shop for hours, just feet from our house. And got security cameras and looked at them two days later and over at one of our machine sheds, there were people stealing gas. So who knows how much stuff goes on? And really, if you had them, it might be beneficial. You know how many crimes they seem to solve? Because they've got security footage from other places. It could be a community benefit. Where it benefited others too. But anyway, it just really brought it to my mind, how many, how much creepy stuff is going on out there. Really brought it home also.
Yep, I agree. So far, so far, we've been pretty okay at most of the locations. We've not, we usually can tell, cause we don't have, I mean, we're one of the few locations that has out something, a building outside of our typical building. Um, so we've been lucky. But I, it may be something to think about with, that with financing this building. I don't know that we wanna take on it. I would think we're probably looking at upwards of fifty, maybe fifty thousand to do that with all the locations. And that's not to, if we wanted to monitor it, it's a pretty hefty tag. What is it, about a thousand dollars a year per location? So that's, you know, nine thousand extra dollars, so it's just something for us to think about, but certainly as we have problems, we're just gonna have to really, yeah. And the new building will be super camered and secure, so. Yeah, that's part of the plan. Then, um, I just, I think we talked a little bit about this coming up last time, but the Monet Teen Ambassador Group held their fundraiser on April twenty-fourth. They raised three thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars. Um, the teen group, uh, took a percentage of that for their programs and supplies and stuff. Um, so a little over a thousand dollars and then the rest of the money went to the Monet Building Fund. And that gives them a great start for their ten thousand dollar fundraising goal. So I'm real impressed. These kids were really excited and very committed to, um, doing this, but the big shout-out needs to go to Amber. She seems to have some kinda magic touch. She got all the supplies donated. Um, she, uh, had the teens practice food safety beforehand. She had them get certificates from the Health Department so that we had clean food prep preparation and I really didn't have any complaints. The only complaint was we ran out of food. So, um, and she had way more chicken than she thought that she had. Um, and so we ended up giving some, some of that away to some local, I think a local church and something else and a shelter. Um, but, uh, you know, I, 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 she's been a great addition to the staff and her heart really is with the teen, teen group, and so I, and that's evident in the growing numbers. I think she's up to eighteen kids that rotate through, so, and true teens, like she's got a true teen group, not pre-teens, so. Um, good news on the state library funding horizon. Um, it has really been beneficial to have Ashcroft, who's a strong library supporter um, in his position, and I think that that's been a, a great impact on being able to get funding. But, um, state aid, um, will come in for the state at the same pri- amount that it did last year. Real is seeing a, over a million dollar increase. Remember Real Funds? That's the Rural Electronics something Act for libraries. I don't remember exactly, but it is what helps offset costs for us for internet service through Mournet. And then A and E funding, which is our athletes and entertainment tax that they have to pay. That's supposed to be a hundred percent to libraries in the state. It's never been fully funded. But this year, they actually gave us three million, seven hundred forty thousand, so that's a huge increase. Uh, I think we got eight hundred thousand, something like that last year. Um, and then there'll be additional funding from federal grants and money from the American Rescue Plan Act that's also available. So now, of course, the governor could withhold. You know, he could approve it, but then withhold it. We've seen that happen before, so I don't know. Well, he's very conservative in his, uh, view of budget, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but we'll see what happens on that. But if we get all the money, it's gonna be a good year for us, so. Uh, the pandemic response grants, which is the American Rescue, Rescue Plan Grant. The state library got money as a part of that. And they set aside funds, uh, for three groups. And we're in one of those groups, so with population between thirty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand, we were notified that we were eligible to apply. So we can apply for hotspots, wifi, e-content, library kiosks at partner locations, education programs, laptops and so forth. Um, the technology funds, um, require anywhere from twenty-five percent to a sixty percent match. So it's not as exciting as it could be, um. And of course, this only pays for one year. So if we, for example, got hotspots, it's on, it'll pay for the hotspots, but only one year of service. So we're not real hep on doing that, because it's expensive to pay for a year of service for the hotspots and we already have issues with them anyway. So we'll, we're probably not gonna do hotspots. But we are considering looking at wifi charging stations. We have so many people that are hooking into our building that um, there are solar-powered charging stations that we can put on our property where people can plug their phones or devices in and then also have wifi. So I think that that might be a way for us to go. Um, and so Leanne is supposed to be looking into that. And we were only gonna do this at the, because it's expensive and the top end of the grant is twenty thousand. Um, and we've been kinda slow moving on this, cause of everything going on, so I don't know how much. If they're doing this all at one chunk or it's first come, first served, I don't know.
These charging stations, are they gonna be inside the building or outside? No, you know that they have free wifi down here at the pavilion and, and plugins and things. And it, it attracts a lot of homeless.
We're, we already have it here. It's just that rather than it being creepy right next to the building, we can put them where we want and then close off those electrical outlets then. So, yep.
But why would homeless have phones?
Exactly, exactly.
And quite honestly, because of odor issues and stuff, if we can give them an option to have service, it's, it's a good thing. It, but we can do it like here, for example, we can do it where it faces the street. Where they'll be seen and not between the buildings back here where it's really creepy, so. Um, but they're doing it anyway. They're finding our electrical plugs and doing it anyway, so let's give them something where we can really monitor what's going on. Um, if we do it, I just, you know, we still haven't made any decisions, so we'll see what happens. And I think I already told you that Jan has re- is resigning, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that that got in our formal minutes, so her last meeting.
Make my heart sick.
I know, we're sad, um, but it's for a good reason.
It is for a good reason. Get to take care of my granddaughter.
So, um, and so she's already given us a name and so we'll see if we can get somebody in place June one. And then Wendy, have you received your re-commission yet? Berry County's really slow on that, so I'll have to call. I sent the letter. But sometimes I have to call and remind them to put it on the meeting, so. Um, and then just a heads up that the, um, Summer Reading Challenge is what we're calling the reading program this year. Um, the theme is Tales and Tales. Um, we start registration June first and then the program officially kicks off on the seventh. We try to give people time, you know, they get excited to preregister for that. Um, it will be doing it through WANDU Reader this year. Um, and, but they can still register in person if they wanna do, if they don't wanna do the online program. Um, we're gonna have a hybrid of outreach, outdoor, virtual programs throughout the summer. Um, and then we have about twenty different movie showings, we hope, although Cassville was already rained out and it's not looking good for Mount, uh, for Marionville tomorrow. Swank, who we have our license, one of our licenses through, um, to show movies, has it, but outdoor movies are another beast. Um, offered free outdoor movie possibilities with certain movies under certain restrictions um, to libraries and other places this summer. And so that's why we're able to do all of this, where locations typically couldn't afford four or five hundred dollars a movie to, to rent or to get the licensing. Now we can do them for free, so that's a really nice, um, thing and people are pretty excited, so I'm hoping for good attendance. Um, we'll see how excited the branches are when they have to set the equipment. Um, we'll see how excited the branches are when they have to set the equipment up themselves. Cause Greg did it last time, but we only had about, what, five movies, so it wasn't bad, but he can't do twenty. Movies, so.
Is there a list somewhere of what the movies are?
Yes, you have to go, be, that, one of the restrictions is we can't advertise what the movies are. But we can tell people with the dates and then we can give them the link to our website, so on our website link. Is a list of the movies. So that's, it's because of those restrictions. Then uh as Joyce said, we've had several pretty big donations come in. We had a former staff member. And her husband gave us a five thousand dollar donation, um. We had an out of state donation of five thousand, ten thousand dollars. As Joyce said, from a, a man in Las Vegas who used to live here. And used the library when it was at the City Hall building. He's a dentist, um, we had, um. I ju- I went to speak to the retired teachers. They gave us a five hundred dollar donation. What was the other small donation?
Small ones, but we have a lady that called about dropping out the check and I think that was another hundred and fifty and.
So, and we've had a lot of people submit, you know, like they wanna do so much per month for overtime. I'm not gonna announce yet who did this, but I did have an um, a Monet resident. He was well known in the community and has donated lots of money over the years. And also to our branches that is going to donate fifty thousand dollars. And the corresponding bank. Will also be donating fifty thousand dollars. Or a hundred thousand dollars in naming rights to the children's department. So I will make a big announcement about that soon, um. But I'm hoping that that will spawn some of the older community members to make donations, so. I'm sure maybe Julie knows who I'm talking about by now. So, at any rate, um, oh, I don't wanna just say it on record until we're able to make a big announcement, so. That was very exciting um to be able to do that and we're really grateful for a significant donation. Um, when I've been talking with community groups, just a few, um. I tried to make a plea to them and to anybody I talked to to say, this is a good opportunity. For your family or a group of friends to make a donation in honor or in memorial of somebody. Um, where it has a really significant impact, so. You know, rather than Wendy giving a hundred dollars, if she got with her family and said, hey, let's give a thousand dollars, can. Can we come up with that as a group? And then we can honor my mom, you know, who was an avid book reader, um, then that has, you know, the. Uh, the family of gets a plaque. And it's a really nice way to do that, so it's just to remind people that. You know, a little money put together can have a huge impact and people have not really thought about that. And so, um, I think it's just something to think about and maybe that's something for you to push with your. With your friends, so.
The, the donation wall, um, everybody's really excited about the donation.
Oh yeah, and it's really funny because the guy that gave the ten thousand dollars. He was like, he emailed Greg with his very specific way he wanted it. So I thought that, I think that's really fun. And of course, if they donate, it really to, to donate uh and have a room named, it needs to be six figures. At least, uh, I'm, I'm saying for the building to be named, it needs to be a million or more. Dollars. You all are okay with that, but, um. So. That's kind of where we're at, um, even, eve- and the other thing is, um, if it comes up. Within the children's department, for example, or within the adult reading area or within the. Patio, we still can have named opportunities. They could ne- they could pay. For the children's reading area or the trees or, I mean, we put a plaque anywhere, people give us enough money. So if somebody gave us twenty thousand dollars, we can name the, the house reading area. And put a big old brass plaque up there. It's well worth the money for that, so.
And we'll come up with a wish list like we've done in all the building projects. You know, once people start seeing the building and they realize that they'd like to have someone's name on something. At Casville, you know, we had a, we had a pretty good sized wish list and we got all but about five things um financed. You know, people would come up and say, can I pay for the art? Um, could I pay for, you know, the display cases? Could I pay for and put somebody's name on it? And uh, once we set out that wish list, we had people, you know, calling, wanting to pay for those things. We picked them out. We don't ask, you know, we don't want anybody to go out and buy something and bring it in. But um, but we did that at Casville. We also did it at uh, uh Marionville. And it went over real well. It really did help us fill in a lot of the blanks.
No murals?
No.
There's nowhere to put any anyway.
Good. Okay, we need a motion to approve the director's report.
I second it.
Wendy? Julie?
Okay, we've got a bunch of seconds here.
And Charles? All in favor?
Charles and Jan.
Charles and Jan. I think she was asking for who, who was voting yes, so. Okay, we're all good.
Okay, I'm, I'm lagging here a little bit. Ratify steel decking, pre-purchase expenditure vote.
So this is what you all voted to do, which is the pre-purchase of the steel decking, so it's just. Takes a motion and we're done with this one.
I, I make a motion to pre- pre-purchase the metal decking for the new building project in Monet.
Second.
Win. Wendy seconds it.
Okay, I'm, I've got everybody frozen. So, vote.
Everybody vote, okay, unanimous.
Okay. Pandemic guideline res- vision.
Okay, so with the CDC saying that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to mask. Has caused all kinds of problems across the system. Um, so just to do a little pre-work, and we had already planned to discuss meeting room use anyway. So it just ups the ante for things, um. So I asked the staff, or the supervisors rather, and, and most of them, I think. Went to their staff and asked for input as well. Um, several questions about should we require masks? Um, or continue to require masks? Should we, if we don't have mask, is it just for vaccinated? Do they have to show proof? So I sent all that to you. I don't, I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but basically. The gist of what I heard from everyone is. We can't, uh, how do we require masks when the CDC says if you're vaccinated, you don't wear them and they're already. Having arguments with staff or with customers anyway, so. My recommendation is, is that we say that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. And if you're unvaccinated, you should continue to wear a mask and shield. But if you tell us that you're vaccinated, I'm not gonna ask for proof. Well, we can't, we could as an employer, but I don't want to. Um, I can already tell you, I did a unofficial survey. Uh, uh, monkey, whatever you call that, monkey survey, survey monkey. And I don't know who responded, um, cause it doesn't tell me that, which is why I did it that way. And about thirty percent of the staff will not be vaccinated, that. And don't plan to. Um, I didn't ask for a reason why, um, and I don't know which locations. The only location I know for sure is a hundred percent vaccinated. Along with their families is Casville and that's because that they volunteered that information. So it gets really wiggy with HIPAA. So I'm not, I'm just not gonna, I'm not gonna ask at any rate, um, and then, um. If people are not comfortable, I mean, that's a personal choice if they want. I still continue to wear a mask in settings where there's lots of people. Um, but in meetings and stuff where I know most everybody's vaccinated. Like when we met with the banks last week, nobody wore a mask. So, and it wasn't required in the building, so, um. Then as far as meeting room, I mean, that impacts our meeting room policy. I would recommend, because most of our meeting rooms are small. Um, that, um, I have a supervisors' meeting this afternoon at one. That I talk to the supervisors, um, individually. And have them recommend what the maximum number should be based on the size of their room. Because I think, you know, when you're enclosed, we don't really. Uh, know what ventilation is like in our meeting rooms, just to be safe. I think we should still require social distancing and mask wearing if you're unvaccinated, again voluntary. But at least social distancing and then have them wipe everything down. I have a mixed response about whether we should allow the public. But I don't know how we could allow meeting room use for the staff, but not for the public. We have so many groups that have, I mean, I have literally got, I, I got to the point where I, I told the branches. Quit sending me requests for board approval because I, I'm just in, I was inundated. With my book club wants to meet, they're all vaccinated. My bridge club wants to meet, my. You know, whatever club wants to meet, I said, we're gonna talk about it at the board meeting, stop it. So multiple, multiple groups. We have school groups that wanna come in, so. At any rate, so that's, my recommendation is that we still limit the use of the meeting rooms, but we let. Anybody use them. I'm not sure about the. I'm not sure about, um, like baby showers, what, you know, we don't have many of those, but. There's no way we could limit people for that, so I'm still gonna say on a case by case basis. And I'll make an approval for it, and if it's too many people, then I'll just nix it. If that works for you all, um. We've not really needed to enforce the time limits or the. No, uh, limits for capacity for a while, it's just sort of self-done it. So I just say do away with all that anyway, um. So, uh, co- computer use has always been sixty minutes at a time, so I love that the same. I just said that we should encourage customers to social distance. A lot of the branches have tables in front of the desk. We never used Plexiglas, cause I, it was an expense I didn't wanna go to. If they're wearing a mask, I didn't see a need for a piece of Plexiglas. Which I'm not sure how much it did anyway. Um, we can still get out face masks and hand sanitizer as we've been doing. Um, I still would say if they're displaying. Signs of illness and we all know what that looks like, that we just ask them not to come in. Hopefully people have sense not to, but you'd be surprised. At how many people when they're sick throw up kids in the building.
They do at school too.
Temperature, but we thought we'd stop here before we went home, so he could get a movie and, and back to all of you. It does happen, and if a customer's listening, don't do that.
It's all the time, uh, they go to the doctor, they go to the pharmacy, then they come to the library to get entertainment. Or while they lay in bed. Yep, always been that way.
Um, we'll still let people do curbside and I already told you about the meeting room. Children's toys is the last thing. So, um, I have, I, a while back, I think after one of our meetings, I went ahead and told the staff. Go ahead and put out whatever furniture you want to, um. People have been pretty good about doing social distancing themselves, so we haven't really had to enforce that. Um, and then we went ahead and just allowed people to use any computer rather than blocking them off. And that's been, you know, going fine, um. I haven't seen a dramatic increase in use of the computers, cause a lot of people still don't wanna cut, go into public places. So it's sort of taking care of itself, but children's toys. We haven't put out because we all know that little kids put things in their mouth and touch and lick everything and. Um, so I asked them if they wanted to put the toys out. And everybody pretty much said that they, yes, but in limited numbers. So I thought I would talk with the supervisors to, today about what that means and how they wanna do it. And put out some of the toys, but maybe not the tables and stuff yet. Uh, one of the branches suggested having like little containers. They can hand to a customer and then when the customer brought them back, they'd sanitize them for the next person, um. So, cause a lot of kids like to come and play and I thought that was a good solution, um. So we can have this sort of a hybrid of, of things, so those are my suggestions.
Okay. What, um. We need a motion to approve. The revised guidelines.
I still move.
Thank you, all in favor? Motion carried. Uh, nominating committee volunteers.
Remember, this is super easy. Basically, you meet two minutes before the meeting. And make a recommendation on who's the new officers or arm twist the officers that are in place to remain. Which is usually what happens, but that's the nominating committee's job. If you don't volunteer, Regina will. Volunteer you.
Janine?
I can if you need me.
I, we need you, we need you.
Okay.
And Jan, would you like to have the, uh, the last revenge on?
Is that what it is? Revenge committee.
Want me to?
I would appreciate it. How many do we need?
I, I think we're just the two.
Okay. Well, any other business?
If you don't show up in June, you probably will be an officer.
Thing I do need to mention, if it's okay with you. I would prefer to put the meeting on June twenty-fourth. Because uh, it gives me a better idea about the budget, because I'll have at least another week of numbers to use. To calculate for the upcoming year, and just to remind you that. We do, we have to have a budget in place by the end of June. But then typically, we've taken July off and then in August, we do what I call the real budget. Uh, which is not usually vastly different from what we talk about in June, but it's the revised. And so I think we'll just keep that same schedule because the July meeting, I won't. I probably won't have all the numbers quite yet. August seems to be a good date and that's when we do the tax levy. Hearing anyway, so it's a good time. So just to kind of give you an idea, but June is really important. I need everybody to be there. If at all possible, cause it's a big, especially this year is a big. Buh-huh, because.
That's the day after the pre-bid meeting, so maybe, um, I don't know if that has anything to do with it?
No.
Will it be in person or Zoom?
Oh, that's a good question. You all have to decide if you wanna do, I mean, we can meet in person. Oh, that's a good question. You all have to decide if you wanna do. I mean, we can meet in person. It's up to you. At some point, we're gonna have to start back in person, so. It's up to you all if you wanna meet in person, so I'm good either way. I just have to book the meeting room.
Doesn't matter to me.
Me either.
So do you wanna, do you wanna plan to do the June meeting and you can all say goodbye to Jan in person that way?
Oh gosh. Don't do it for my account.
I saw how big the band is, you know, that will be playing, so, you know.
Okay, so.
So what, whatever.
The call. Go ahead.
I think it's time that we all start meeting together.
I miss seeing your faces in person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we cancel the Zoom for next time and meet in person.
So we'll be on the twenty-fourth, is that?
On the twenty-fourth in Pier City.
And so Jan and I need to be there five or ten minutes early to do the nominating, right?
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Or you can talk by phone, however you wanna do it, yep.
Talk by phone? If we're not zooming, why would we wanna talk by phone?
Well, at any time. If you don't wanna wait till the last two minutes before the meeting.
Okay. Let me know. I'll be there bef- I'll be there ten minutes before. Is that Pier City, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well. So it just take, it only takes me about one minute to get down there, so that's, I'll be there.
A motion.
Me too.
Move the meeting, set the meeting time and.
Okay, so we need a motion, Joyce says, to.
It says, you have to set the meeting.
Okay. So Wendy, you're nodding your head. Would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I move that we move back to in-person meetings on June twenty-fourth at Pier City.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And now we need a motion, Mr. Piter, to.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
And second. These seconds, all in favor? Motion carried, okay.
See you in June.
I look forward to seeing you next month on the twenty-fourth.
Thanks, bye.
Bye-bye.